This is my co-host Amelia.
I'm Amelia.
And we're here with the head of city council Jeffrey Vaughn. We're gonna be starting off with some background knowledge. So what was it like just growing up? What was your dream job pretty much?
Well, it's a lot different than what I'm doing now. But when I was younger, I wanted to be a veterinarian. But I didn't make it to veterinary school and ended up where I am today.
The same kind of thing, do you go through like 100 different career options in your head? And then like end up going somewhere completely different?
Yeah, I think I changed my major twice in college. I was kind of torn between art, which I really liked, and science. And I wanted to be an architect and veterinarian. And eventually, I got into the field of public health.
What college did you go into?
Went to Utah State University.
Is the reason why you chose Utah State specifically?
There was several schools I was looking at. I ended up getting an athletic scholarship to Utah State.
Are you applying to colleges to or are you going to military first?
I'm in military, grad high school.
Great.
I think the process of choosing college is kind of stressful for a lot of people.
Yeah, it can be.
Can you tell us about your family?
Yeah, I'm married. I have three sons, three sons in college right now. Really proud of them. And it's exciting to have kids in college. We've been in Marysville quite a while now. Probably getting close to 18, 20 years, something like that.
And then so what was it? You know, you started a business with your wife. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, started a business in 2001. I left Boeing. I left a really good job at Boeing because I just had the itch to try doing my own thing. And my wife and I started a business together. And it's doing well and thriving, going on about 15 years now.
Can you tell us about this business? Like what is it?
Yeah, our business has changed over the years. But in the last 12 years, we focused on party and event decor for weddings and special events and things like that. So you can see I'm a long ways from where I started wanting to be a veterinarian.
Yeah, I'm sure with weddings, it's a lot of stress. It's a lot of fun too.
Yeah.
See it all come together.
It's pretty cool to be able to help our customers at some of the greatest events of their lives.
Also, you were also in the Boy Scouts. How was that like?
Yeah, I was in the Boy Scouts, became an Eagle Scout. I love scouts. I love camping and all of that stuff. And I also really appreciated the things it taught me about our country and citizenship. And that really is kind of what led me to being in city council.
So what other things you do to stay involved in the community?
I've coached soccer teams, I'm involved in my church. I do a lot of volunteer work. And city council takes a fair amount of time too. But I love Marysville and love being involved.
How long have you been in Marysville again?
I think about 18 years or so. Yeah.
What was it like kind of first moving in? It kind of caught your attention with the community?
Well, the first thing that caught our attention was we were trying to find housing that we could afford. At the time, our budget was pretty limited. And in Marysville, had some options. But I remember we went to Jennings Park and just fell in love with Jennings Park and thought, wow, what a nice place and what seemed to be a very nice community. And it just really clicked with us. And so we ended up being able to find a house. And we've been here ever since.
I think my family is kind of the same thing, like looking for affordable housing when we moved here as well.
Yeah.
Definitely like a big, because we started looking local to you and then kind of jumped out a little bit. It's still a very nice community. A lot of places to go still.
Yeah.
What part of Marysville do you live in?
I just live not too far from the golf course.
It's nicer down there?
It is.
You want to do a quick break?
Yeah, I guess you can jump to a quick break. We'll be right back talking more about your job.
Quick break to our segment post-Spring's Thanksgiving workout. Right back.
I ate way too much yesterday. Like I seriously need to work out.
No, same. They put the stuffing in the turkey this year. That was so good, I just couldn't stop eating it. Even though it's supposed to be healthy?
It's not.
Hey, look, it looks like there's a new gym starting up over there.
Hi, are you guys new today?
Yeah, we really need to start working out.
We need a lot this Thanksgiving.
Too much.
I actually have a brand-new workout today. It's called the full-name workout. And you need to do each other your name for your workout.
That seems like a lot. I mean, my name is Annabelle Montgomery. Like, that's gonna take forever.
That's true, but mine is a way coy. So if I do mine, I'll have just enough time to get to my appointment. So I don't even have to change.
Just looking at it makes me tired.
Ah, you're fine. We need a lot this Thanksgiving.
True, okay.
Okay, guys, good luck.
Nine. Ten, finally. Oh my god, right? Are you seriously done already?
Yeah, I have an appointment to make. It's on my phone, you need so long.
I haven't even got to my last name yet.
Oh, that sucks.
Tired, okay, I'm gonna... You know what? You're supposed to be supportive. We're supposed to be doing this together. It's more important than a hair appointment.
Well, my hair is way more important than this.
Well, you're no longer invited to Christmas dinner.
Fine, fine.
Wait, but you guys want memberships? They'll be back by noon anyways.
Morning, Marysville. Welcome back to Charter Chat. We're here with Jeffrey Vaughn, head of city council. Now, earlier, we kind of talked about you going into public health. Can you tell us a little bit more about what led you down that path?
Yeah, I was interested in the sciences, wanted to be a veterinarian. Decided against that when I saw how much schooling it was gonna take. I didn't, I liked college, but not enough to be there for eight or 10 years. So I looked at some other careers I could get into that involved the sciences. And so I got into public health, occupational safety and health specifically. Worked for a couple of Fortune 500 companies first 10 years of my career, one of them being Boeing, and really enjoyed that.
So was that job like at Boeing that you...
What I did there was I helped to identify and quantify hazards in the workplace. The specific things I worked on were ergonomics. I also worked on some air quality type of issues, having to do with organic vapors that are used in the manufacturing process and doing some monitoring of those things, as well as a couple other little projects having to do with the air quality inside the factory.
Responsible for keeping everyone safe.
Yeah.
Then from that, then what led you from that to politics?
Well, I got interested in politics because shortly after we moved to Marysville, my wife and I decided that we wanted to be more involved in the community. And so I started reading the newspaper and following some of the things that were going on. And there were a couple things happening in the community that I thought should be different. And so I started going to city council meetings and observing. And then occasionally, I would comment to the city council members and kind of became a regular there, a regular face at those meetings. And there aren't many people that show up there. But that's how I kind of first got interested in it. And then after a while, an opportunity opened up for me to be able to run for a city council seat. And so I did that.
So how would you explain the process of becoming a city council member?
It's fairly easy. There's a period of time set aside, about a week. If you're interested, you go to the county and sign up. You have to pay a little bit of money. I think it's something like $80 or something now for a city council member. And that puts you on the ballot. And then you, if you're running against somebody, you try and get people to vote for you. That's essentially the process. The first time I ran, I didn't have an opponent. So the campaign was pretty good. I just had to beat a write-in candidate if there was gonna be one, which there wasn't. So that went pretty well.
Did you ever have an opponent?
I did. The last time I ran, about two years ago, I had an opponent.
So can you explain your campaigning process when you had an opponent? Like, how was that like?
Yeah, my campaign process was just to make sure that I was talking to, meeting with as many people as possible. I had a pretty low-key campaign because of running my business. I didn't have a lot of time to go out and campaign. But as much time as I had, I'd go and do that. And I just put the best, you know, the best information out there about what I stood for. And I just asked for the voters to vote for me, and they did.
Do you ever like see yourself like going up the ladder from Marysville Council to, I don't know, maybe Washington?
Yeah, I've thought about it. But honestly, city council, I really enjoy. It's possible I could go beyond that. But right now, that's as far as I see myself going. And a lot of it's because of how busy I am with the business. And it would be, I would have to, you know, leave my business to go do that. Being a city council member is just a part-time thing, and I can handle that with everything else.
Have you been keeping up with the big presidential race? It's been a lot of drama this year.
Yeah, it's very interesting, isn't it? And it's different than any other, you know, primary campaign that I've ever seen, you know, on both sides. So yeah, I'm pretty interested in that. I watch a lot of, a lot of the coverage of that. And I think it's great that we have a process where these candidates have the chance to kind of put their views out there and debate. And I think it's very healthy for the whole system to have this kind of a process.
I think both of us are gonna be able to do it for the first time. So I think we're kind of excited that we can kind of get into it firsthand.
It's great. And I'm so glad to hear you guys are excited to vote. We need more people to vote. We need more people to be informed about what happens in the nation and also in their local community. And honestly, our voter turnout is pathetic. We need more people to be involved.
Especially in the local elections where you really have arguably the most power in your vote.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
There's been a lot of candidates this year that have like empowered the youth pretty much, like Bernie Sanders and even Donald Trump has got a lot, but don't vote usually. Getting people to vote now, it's crazy.
Yeah, and that's real key. We've seen that in the last two presidential elections, the importance of getting, you know, the youth vote and others that might not ordinarily vote.
All right, well, speaking of politics and debates, we're gonna cut to a segment about Hillary Clinton against Carly Fiorina in a quick debate. We'll be right back.
This is TV3 News. I'm Rachel. I'm here with Hillary Clinton and Carly Fiorina. Carly Fiorina finally got her wish today to debate Hillary Clinton.
Say hello, ladies.
Hello, it's so great. Thank you for having us, Rachel.
Hello, hi.
It's nice to have women in politics and have a debate from a woman's perspective.
Today, we'll be starting with the economy. Hillary, what are your plans for the economy?
Well, Rachel, the first thing I would do is close the gender pay gap. We really need to reach equality between men and women. Women have been waiting so long for this. And further, I would crack down on Wall Street because families are struggling out there and we need to cut down on the divide in pay between the 1% and the 99%. And the donations I receive from Wall Street will in no way affect the way I enforce tougher regulations on Wall Street.
Carly, what are your thoughts on Hillary's answer?
Well, Rachel, frankly, I think that Hillary Clinton is a, she's a liar and she's a baby killer. Thank you, America.
Carly, what will you do to fix the economy?
Well, I know for sure Hillary Clinton is going to raise taxes. And if I were president, I would not raise the taxes like Hillary Clinton would do.
Hillary, there has been a lot of criticism on your donors being big banks from Wall Street. What do you have to say to them?
Well, Rachel, I have two words for those critics. 9/11. When I was Senator of New York, guess where 9/11 happened? Right in the middle of New York where Wall Street lives. And I helped them, and they owe me.
Carly, a lot of critics are saying that you were the cancer of HP while you were the CEO. What do you have to say to them?
Well, Rachel, the only thing that matters is that I stand by my record. I am more of a business and worldly woman than Hillary Clinton will ever be. I've met with people all around the world, like Vladimir Putin, and he will soon realize that he should be the one bowing down to me. Hashtag winning.
Um, I'm getting something from my boss. He says that no one really cares what you guys have to say and that this is very boring. We're going to cut to your final statements. Hillary, go.
What? I've wanted this debate for such a long time now, okay? I deserve being president way more than her, okay? You guys, she is a baby killer. She's gonna raise your taxes. Everyone complains about taxes. I'm not gonna do that. Am I gonna raise taxes? No, I'm not gonna raise it.
Please sit down or else I'm gonna call security. I just wanna go home. This is really boring.
Anyways, back to my closing statement. You can trust me to be an advocate for women and families as I have been all throughout my political career. I promise I am 100% consistent in that regard. And sure, I've evolved like everyone else in this country. But you can trust me to stand for what matters: women and families.
Carly, your turn.
You know what, Rachel? I got a couple bullet points for you. Vladimir Putin, raising taxes, killing babies. Thank you, America.
Morning, Marysville. Welcome back to Charter Chat. We're back here with Jeffrey Vaughn, head of Marysville City Council. So we were kind of talking a little bit about politics earlier. What are some issues in like the state government that kind of intrigued your attention?
Yeah, well, locally, a perennial issue for us has been transportation and congestion. And so that's something I'm always looking at, making sure we have adequate funding for transportation. It's better than it's been in the past. We're receiving more funding than we have in the past. So I'm excited about that. And there's been some good projects that have improved Marysville's traffic infrastructure. So that's a big one. And then, you know, crime's another one, really important. We've made a lot of headway with crime reduction in the last couple of years. And that's exciting. There's still a lot of work to do with that. Those are a couple of the big ones that I am very interested in.
How do you work with upper levels of government to kind of do your job beyond just the city?
It's important that we have relationships with our legislators on the state level and also on the national level. And frequently, our council members have gone back to Washington DC to meet with our legislators there. And also, we go down to Olympia and do the same. And it's helped tremendously. They know who we are. They know what our transportation needs are. They know some of the challenges we have in other areas of our community, like schools and policing and so forth. And so it's really important that we have those good relationships and they know who we are.
Is there any like big issue in Maryland, Marysville, that you wanted to like hone in on?
Yeah, there's a couple of issues. One in particular, the city, it's not one that really catches the attention of many people, but it's taken a lot of our time as a council. And that is the future formation of our fire district. And the city and the fire district are in some negotiations to try and put together a structure that will carry us forward in the next 10 to 20 years. So not real exciting from the outside, but on the inside, there's a lot of work that's being done on that.
Sometimes like the most important issues are the ones that aren't the most appealing to talk about.
Yeah.
The ones that grab the headlines.
It's true.
So, and you mentioned there's some of the city council members went to Washington DC. That must have been exciting, like from such a small town to like...
It is. And the last, well, every time I've been there, we've, it's just been a really good experience. We get to sit down with our representatives there in their office in Washington DC. And just to be able to have that kind of access, which, you know, isn't just for elected people, you know? You can arrange to go see your representatives there as well. But it's neat to do that. And then to see some of the things that happen there while you're there. It's a very busy, bustling city and all kinds of stuff going on. And you'll be on Capitol Hill and you'll see some of this stuff happen while you're there. And then you go to the hotel and you see it on the cable news shows. And it's pretty cool to be a part of that.
And how would you describe your relationship with our state representatives in Washington? Would you say it's a good one, right?
It is good. We do have a good relationship. And our mayor does a good job of maintaining those relationships. And we frequently have meetings with them when they come back or when they come up to our area. We show them some of the projects we're working on, talk about challenges. And they've been good partners with us.
What other kind of connections do you have to maintain to do your job? Like, is there any like private sector connections that you maintain?
Yeah, so as far as business goes and the private sector, our, one of our big initiatives as a city council is economic development. And we're trying to bring more employers to Marysville. And so those relationships we have with the business community and preparing our city for these companies to come in is really important. And then the other relationship that's important and probably more important than all, than all the others, is the relationship with individual citizens. And it's important that we get that feedback from our citizens and city council members. And I ask my friends and neighbors frequently what they think about certain things. And that matters because really, I report to them.
So if we went to a city council meeting, what kind of things could we expect?
If you go to a city council meeting, you can expect, it's probably a little more formal than what you would see in a lot of meetings you'd go to other places. And that's by design. But at the beginning of the meeting, there are presentations and sometimes awards. And then the business part of the meeting, we approve claims and expenditures, and that's kind of boring. And then there's other things where there's public input on issues that we will discuss as a council. And so you can see pros and cons discussed. You'll see votes happen. A lot of times, the votes aren't very exciting, but sometimes there are issues where we're split as a council and we don't know how it's gonna go. And that's where some of the excitement comes in when you have a split vote.
Has there been any criticism from like a citizen's in Marysville to a position that the city council had, any like...
Oh, yeah, there's always criticism. And that just comes with the job. We've, most recently, we've had a lot of criticism about fireworks in the city of Marysville. And you may recall that we, in the last election, we put an advisory vote to the citizens to ask them if the city should ban fireworks in Marysville. Lots and lots of comments and input about that. And ultimately, the vote came through that a majority of our citizens would like to see a ban on fireworks, which surprised me, surprised a lot of us. We didn't think it would be that overwhelming in the vote. So that's an example of some of the feedback that we get from our constituents.
I didn't even know that.
Because it depends, there's all kinds of different issues involved in that. Like, well, some people are sensitive to the noise and stuff, so...
Yeah, it is. You know, and I love fireworks and enjoy the Fourth of July, but there's some people, like some of our veterans, it's a very difficult holiday for them. And pets. And it's, and I've, you know, even though I enjoy fireworks, I worry a little bit about the house catching fire and intend not to be gone on that day. I wanna be around just in case. So I understand when people are concerned about some of those issues.
It's also kind of like tempting because it's because the reservation is so close by with the different kind of fireworks.
I know, it's such a unique problem. And the question is, you know, if we have a ban, will it even really be effective with so many fireworks so close? It's just, it's hard to say.
I guess we'll take another quick break and we'll kind of get more into what you're in charge of specifically in your job. We'll be right back.
What are you doing, young lady? Don't you know that graffiti is wrong? This whiteboard is pristine for people to write educational material on. This is not educational. Erase it now. That's right, keep walking. Put the pen down. That is graffiti. You need to stop. It is bad. That's right, you heard me. Give me the pen now. Now get to walking. Who did this? It's a secret marker. Those things should be banned. Graffiti makes me so mad.
All right, we're back, Marysville. We're back with Jeffrey Vaughn. And we just saw a segment kind of talking about like graffiti. So you know that you're in charge of the graffiti task force. Can you go into a little bit more about that?
Sure. A number of years ago, I became concerned about the amount of graffiti in our community. And as a city council member, I felt that it was my responsibility to try and do something about it. And we formed the graffiti task force. And what we did is we looked at the whole problem from, you know, who's doing the graffiti? How do we prevent it? How do we clean it up? What kinds of things can we do in schools to help educate and keep young people from getting involved in that? And it was a very effective initiative that was started. And there were, in those first couple of years, there were a large number of arrests of people who were caught doing graffiti. And that was, it was good to have the enforcement side of it. And then there was a big push in our middle schools to help educate young people on why we don't wanna mess up our community with graffiti. And so it was a very successful effort. Now, now we have a lot of work that's being done every day to make sure graffiti is cleaned up quickly and to identify who's doing it. And that's just done by taking pictures and good police work. And I think even recently, our police chief was reporting on an arrest of somebody doing graffiti. So it's happening all the time now with our law enforcement to address.
Would you say those graffitis were related to like gangs or just people just being hooligans or...
Yeah, in my discussions with the police, most of it is just people doing graffiti, not necessarily those that identify with the gang, but some is. And we have to take the graffiti seriously. And our police have no tolerance for graffiti or gang activity at all. And I have to, you know, give them credit for being tough on that and keeping that element from getting a foothold in our community.
Has there been a gang problem that you guys have like brought up in city council?
Not that really has been brought up in city council. From time to time, there are crimes that are committed that there may be somebody who affiliates with the gang who's involved in that, and we become aware of it. But, you know, I wouldn't say that it's something that happens very often, but on occasion.
With graffiti, I guess, insurance hard to enforce because there's so many places and like all, like I know like in Jennings Park, sometimes it's just a little corner that you can't get everything. So it's just a constant battle, I'm sure, for law enforcement.
It really is. And not only law enforcement, but property owners. And we've asked property owners to clean up graffiti within 24 hours. And for the most part, they're able to do that. Whether or not the city will step in and help property owners do that. And that's really important because if it gets cleaned up fast, then those people that are doing the graffiti learn that it's not gonna be tolerated.
So do you work with citizens as well? Does it kind of help assist at property owners and stuff?
Absolutely. Absolutely, we do.
What other issues do you focus on as head of city council?
A lot of it's, like I said before, not real exciting stuff, but things like making sure that we have sufficient financial reserves in the city, that money's being spent wisely, that we have adequate city employees and the right employees and those kinds of things, which the mayor handles a lot of. But as city council, we make sure from a policy standpoint that the citizens' tax dollars are used wisely and that these problems are addressed quickly. And so that's, it's very rewarding as a council member to be, to be able with six other people I serve with on council, to be able to address these problems and actually see a lot of them get fixed. And that's one of the things I really enjoy about being on council.
How do you rely on your fellow council members to kind of solve problems? Like, do you have certain strengths and businesses that you kind of help each other out with?
Yeah, and that's a great question because there's seven of us and I'm only one-seventh of every decision that's made. I can't act alone. I have to have at least three other council members that are along with me to move something forward in order to have majority. So I have to get along with my fellow council members. And we're really fortunate because the seven of us get along really well. We have some of the same ideas about the direction we want the city to go in, but we have differences in how to go about that. And it's good that I can call them up and talk about those things and try and figure out how we can make something work. And sometimes we don't agree, and that's okay. I still have a lot of respect for the people that I serve with and enjoy working with them.
Earlier, you said that your city council is not affiliated with like a party, like the Republican Party or the Democratic Party. So you said that was like, makes it much more easier for you guys to get along?
Yeah, there's, the city council positions and the mayor is nonpartisan. So you don't run as a member of any party. And so it's really all about the issues. It's not about the party you're from. It's about the issues. And the parties don't matter as much on the local level when you're talking about, you know, fixing roads and crime and stuff like that. It doesn't matter. And that's the real cool thing I like about local politics is we don't have to worry about that. We just worry about fixing problems and communicating with our citizens.
Because I'm sure there would be like a huge bias if someone was like pinpointing with the party. And if they identify as that party, I'm sure they wouldn't even look at it and just go for the person that goes with their party.
I think you're right. I think there's some people who just vote based on whether there's a D or an R or something else after a person's name and don't really look at what they stand for. And again, city, being on city council is great because it really forces people to look at what I stand for as a council member to vote on that rather than a letter after my name.
So it's also more efficient too because then you don't get gridlocked with down party lines and stuff like that.
Yeah, and you don't have party leaders telling you what to do or things like that. You're just doing what you think is right.
Then you don't have to be like affiliated with like the parties like nonsense. Or like, there's always going to be bad parts of each party and you don't have to deal with like.
Your party platform.
Yeah. But on the flip side of it though, if it was partisan, you might get some help from a party, like financial help or campaign help. So when you campaign, you're kind of on your own. You've got to pull together people to help you out. But again, I think, I think that's the great thing about, about local politics. I, I'm happy with it.
Less money to kind of corrupt it to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Because money plays a huge part in politics. As we see, like many of the candidates like have these humongous donors that are giving them so much money, like Hillary Clinton and Jeb Bush. So much money being poured into them, it's crazy.
Yeah. And there's money that happens in local campaigns too, but not, not on the magnitude you see on a national level, obviously. So it's, but the money that comes in locally is, you know, it's not coming from big national groups typically. It's ordinary folks giving 20, 30 bucks here and there.
Building from grassroots campaigns is probably the best way to get anyone involved.
Yeah. And there's some businesses that do contribute to campaigns. But again, it's usually more, you know, local business interests and.
Would you like to see money being like taken out of politics, like in the national level?
Well, that's, it's kind of hard to answer that question because I see the negative side of some of that. But you have to have money to run campaigns. It's expensive to do a TV commercial. And if you want to get your candidate elected, then you got to, they need money to do it. And some people are able to do that through social campaigns and get lots of small donations. But, you know, the kind of money that it takes in these campaigns, you're not likely to get from a bunch of citizens. And so then it's like, okay, if I take, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars from business interests, will that influence me as a candidate? You know, and I, I know that it does influence candidates. And some, some it doesn't, but I know, you know, it happens. And so it's, that's the good side, bad side of money. You got to have it. But there is sometimes a dark side to it. But it comes down to that person and how, how they then act as a candidate and what they do as a candidate. That's the real, it's not the money. It's how they respond with that.
The character of the person.
Exactly. It comes down to character.
Well, thanks so much for being with us. It was great having you. It was great learning more about the city council. Love to probably have you again sometime.
Love to come back. And it's been fun being with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us today, Marysville. We'll see you next time on Charter Chat.